Hi, and welcome to Just Thinking. Today, we're going to be talking about the warrant for the upcoming town meeting. Town meeting is held at the end of October, October 28th, at 7:30 PM at the high school auditorium. I'll say that another 23 times, just to make sure that you get that. Okay, second thing is, we are streaming live to Facebook. Now, assuming that we get some texts from people who are interested in asking questions, and we welcome any questions that you have, if we do, please understand that this is live, but subsequent evenings, when you might see this on HCAT or on Facebook, it won't be live. So, don't text us then. Text now, but not later. Okay, so with me is John Cronin, and John is the vice chair of the -- can we still call you the Board of Selectmen since we haven't passed this?
Of course.
Well, it really is the Select Board now, because I think you guys agreed to call yourselves the Select Board.
We did.
Now that you have a female on there, the gender stuff gets to be really complicated.
All right.
All right, John, welcome. How are you?
I'm well, thanks. Thanks for having me in. I appreciate it.
No problem. This is your second year?
It is.
On the board?
Yeah.
And process for the warrant is all going well, I hope?
It's going as well as can be expected. It's a bit like herding cats, but, you know, we'll get there.
All right. Well, we have a few interesting ones. You start off with one that's sort of an interesting one, a curiosity, because it's basically increasing salaries for a bunch of department heads.
Right.
Okay, so let's go back and explain how we got to this point.
Sure. So, briefly, the warrant currently stands at 23 articles. A number of them are sponsored by the Select Board. The first one that you bring in seeks to move funding from a centralized employee benefits account where it was appropriated in the spring after town meeting, down into the various budgets that are controlled by department heads. The first year on the board, I came to understand that there was a tremendous inequity in pay of our department heads. Having some previous experience being on the Board of Assessors, I saw firsthand how the town had, over a period of time, lost track of paying department heads who were effectively managers, Mary, competitively compared to neighboring towns for the same work. So, we had some work to do in FY '19, and it started with performance evaluations. We wanted every department head to have a performance evaluation that spoke to their skills, their goals, their performance overall. That was conducted primarily in January, February, early spring of this past fiscal year. Upon completion of that process, we engaged the finance committee to examine the possibility of funding these corrective salaries. We started a small working group, and working with them, we concluded that we needed about $75,000 to $80,000 to close the gap for all of these department heads and bring them up to a level that met the average of all the neighboring towns for the same positions. I might add that the performance evaluations were, by and large, successful. No one fell below expectations. We had a couple that were exceeds. Holliston is blessed to have quite a few department heads that performed quite well. They're experts in their field and found to be individuals that other towns call for expert knowledge and opinion. So, we moved ahead, and one of the other items that came up in the spring that we moved to create was the opportunity to put a contract in place for these department heads. Prior to this fiscal year, the only people that could have contracts were relegated by statute: police chief, fire chief, and I think --
Building inspector.
Thank you. One of those. Precious few. Now, through the vote at town meeting in the spring, all department heads have a contract now. So, we felt with the performance evaluation system and the contract, we now have the building blocks to pay these people a fair wage, competitive wage, and hold them accountable to it annually through a contract. So, the corrections were made, and the salaries were distributed this past summer. I think effective September 9th or so, the salaries were corrected. What this article is doing is just simply moving the amount that was funded in the spring down into the respective budgets.
How did you come up with what were competitive salaries?
We used a couple of different surveys. The town administrator did the primary survey. We coupled together some others from other cities and towns. We look at towns that are comparable in Holliston to size. This was tricky, Mary. You cannot look at a salary survey and say that the town building inspector, for example, in Holliston is the same as it is in any other given town. They differ. The senior center director, for example, in Holliston works a different schedule than you would expect for other cities and towns. So, the duties, the size of the communities, they blended in to a point where we had to make some subjective decisions, but we felt that by the time we were done, we were able to conclude that we now have a balanced view of where these people fall. The other piece that was important was a revisitation of the Stone Study Report.
Okay.
The Stone Study was done, I think, about five or six years ago. It specifically looked at Holliston's department heads at the time. It did a comparative study also of communities around us, and we sourced from that information as well. Little old, but we still used some of the relevant information and brought that in as well. So, it was kind of a layered approach, but we feel like we've accomplished something that no other neighboring town has right now. I reached out to the regional selectmen back in the spring to find out if they had a tool. They don't, but they're desperate to see ours, and now that we have it, we'll be happy to share it.
Okay, so, a question for you in terms of impact. Have you thought, or have you seen over history, that this has affected -- not having these salaries in place has affected anything? Has it really made any difference? Do you think you get a different quality of candidate or anything else in any of the positions that we've hired?
Hard to say. Holliston doesn't really practice exit interviews, so it's hard to say if that's been a qualifying factor for people leaving, for example. I do know that many of the department heads that we have have been in their roles for many years.
Right.
So, there's a sense of satisfaction with what they do. We don't see a lot of attrition, but when we do post, it's a mixed bag. You know, I think you and I have had some experience in the Board of Assessors where some of the lower-level employees, you don't get the kind of competition that you would hope. I don't know if that's a factor of wage, location, what have you, but at the department head level, we now feel very comfortable that if a vacancy occurs, we have a fronted position that's competitive to our surrounding communities, and that won't be a barrier to getting the right person for the job.
Okay, good. All right. That should engender some conversation, however, I would expect. We're going to skip over some of those tedious and routine kinds of things about, you know, moving money to stabilization and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
As usual, because our October meeting is typically set to do capital expenses.
That's right.
We have a whole list of them here. These do not include other departments, or do they?
They include all of them.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay, but not the schools?
The schools are in here.
Not in my version?
Okay.
Okay.
That might be one of the things we're competing with tonight, is the version you got was a little earlier than the one I got from last night.
Okay.
The schools presented their material a little over a week ago
Okay.
To the finance committee, and then they came before the Board of Selectmen, I think, last week. So, we've incorporated their request. I can summarize basically and say they've categorized their needs into three categories: infrastructure, technology, and curriculum. We have voted to include them into the warrant.
Sure.
We don't take a vote on the value of what they're asking for.
Right.
It's not our job. That's the finance committee's job.
Right.
But they're presenting $113,418 for infrastructure, $58,859 for technology, and $370,675 for curriculum needs.
Okay.
There was a lot of discussion at last week's finance committee meeting when it was presented by Ms. Ann Louise Hansted. I believe the schools have some ongoing dialogue with the finance committee about some issues associated with their requests.
Okay. Anything new and exciting within our projects that you are responsible?
A couple. Yeah, and this capital, there are a couple. We see some -- we have the Parks and Rec in, and again, independent elected board. Their requests will stand in their own, but they came before us, and I have to say, I'm very happy with the progress they seem to be making towards field maintenance. It's an issue that came before our board last year. A lot of baseball parents were very dissatisfied with the condition of our playing fields, and I think their message has been heard. The Parks and Rec are going to be investing in a few things. Piece of equipment they're buying is an infield grooming machine which can turn over the infield and make it more playable, less hardened. That's a $20,000 piece of equipment that'll be housed by the Department of Public Works and used, obviously, by Mr. Nemeth, who does all the field maintenance. Later on in the warrant, we're going to see a couple of other articles that they put forth that fall under the community preservation funding. So, this piece is new.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
What is it about the fields that doesn't work?
There's a number of different things. I play on them. I'm in a men's softball league in the spring. They're in various stages of decline. They haven't really been properly manicured and cared for. I'm thinking specifically of the Stoddard Park fields. They're hardened surfaces. Some of them have lips where the ball goes into play, it can take off and injure somebody. The fields have poor drainage, for the most part. Think Mission Springs, which, of course, is a very difficult area to put a ball field in the first place, but it chronically floods. So, I think they looked at their totality of need. They brought in a master plan, which has been produced, and they're trying to conceptualize the way forward, and it starts with some of the elements that are in the warrant today.
Okay.
Today. There's a couple of other smaller items. The board has really embraced the need to improve pedestrian safety. You'll be hearing a lot more from us on that over the next several years. It's elevating us one of our primary priorities. But we're moving to purchase more public safety signs. These are the solar-powered signs that are coming into use in many communities. They're very easy to install, right? There's no underground cabling, and we're looking to purchase several of them for high traffic areas, Norfolk Street, and we're also going to be examining the possibility of putting them up here in Prentice, so golfers have an easier way to pass two in front.
You mean the crosswalks?
Yes.
Oh, that would be wonderful. My good God.
Yeah. There's a revisitation here on this article, some items that some people may remember: the traffic signal preemption monitoring equipment. That's $191,000. So, this process started when we did the town lights, Mary. We looked at a process that said, "The lights are great, but in the event of an emergency, and traffic is backed up because it's brush hour, emergency vehicles need a clear path. They need to get through without any delay." Some communities have these strobes, and you'll see them. Framingham's a good example, where if you're in an emergency vehicle, your transmitter will emit to the strobe the need to clear traffic. The initial view was to put these preemptive opticon systems in the new downtown lighting array. We examined the need to put them on all of the lights across Washington Street so that they have a clear throughput to move their emergency vehicles. So, that includes Concord Street, Cole Court, Washington, excuse me, Central Street, of course, and then finally Highland. So, the expanded cost will be to cover the new installation of the opticon on the other lighting arrays, as well as the receivers that go in the emergency vehicles.
Okay, all right. That's an interesting idea. It's not a bad idea, I must admit. There are plenty of times when I've seen things that are scary.
Well, every minute counts when there's an emergency.
Yeah.
There are other pretty typical annual capital needs. We're replacing an engine with the fire department. It's at a hefty price tag, $440,000. I believe the existing one is 20 years old. Chief Cassidy stays on top of his equipment for the replacement cycle. We have a couple of smaller items, including a replacement of a chief's vehicle, some pagers, a skid steerer with the highway department, all replaced material, similar to a dump truck, pickup trucks, emergency backup generator for the water department. And then we get to the police department. Chief Stone desires to bring a motorcycle unit to the Holliston Police Department. It's an idea he floated last year. It was met with mixed reaction. I was in favor of it. It didn't get too far into the warrant. I think people wanted to see some more information on the efficacy of this program. So, Chief Stone did a great job this year. We talked early and often about try to help people understand what the benefit of a motorcycle is in our small community. And I was present when he presented to the finance committee last week, and he described various scenarios where using real calls that have occurred in the last year in Holliston, he spaced them out from the rail trail to remote areas, and he said a conventional response would take 10 minutes, you know, it was time from the time the call went in to the time the responding officer got on scene, to what it would be if a motorcycle got there. And it's dramatically different. The motorcycle's going to have, obviously, radio communications. It will have a DFIB bag on it, NARCAN and other forest responder, critical incident tools that can help save a life. And we thought that that particular utilization of the vehicle was priceless. So, he's bringing that forward this fall, and we fully support the implementation. It's one motorcycle.
One motorcycle. Now, what accounts for the fact that it can get there faster, or sooner? It's not that it can go faster than a car, or they both go fast.
Ease of mobility through traffic, side streets, and in the case of a rail trail off-road.
Okay. So, and it will be allowed to go on the rail trail in the case of an emergency?
Yes. We already have an ATV that the fire department brought on last week. That's more for extrication and for more of an event process, if you will. They recently called for that with a missing person up on South Street. That's a slower deployment, Mary. When the call comes for the ATV, they've got to go to the fire station, they've got to deploy it, get it ready, and move it to where it's got to go. In that case, I don't know how long it took, but you can measure that in many minutes. If a call goes up for a motorcycle for a missing person, they're on their way. They're gone the second they got the call. So, seconds, minutes, they come.
All right.
The rest of the articles relevant to the capital include some senior center improvements. We continue to invest in improving that facility over the years. I'm sure you've seen some of the things we've done. This is to make the center a little bit more livable. We've completed a window project, $54,000 for various pieces of improvement up there as a small price to keep that asset in good shape. I think I've already addressed the schools piece. It's a significant cost here, and I want to draw out one point. When you look at the total that we're sitting on now, it's $1.6 million for capital ask. That's heavy. That's a little heavier than we're accustomed to. We typically see things trending around a million. There are a couple of items that stand right out of the gate. The engine is a $400,000 expense, and of course, the school's curriculum piece of $370,000. The finance committee has some work to do to figure out where these pieces will fall. And I know in a minute, we're going to talk about prioritization, and that's really the answer to the question: what is the most important? What can we afford? Those pieces are coming.
Between fire trucks and curriculum.
Yeah.
Yeah. That could be why we find it hard to find people who want to run for finance committee, right?
I know. I know one of the things that I've been very vocal with the finance committee about, and we haven't untangled this yet, but folks know that the various growing operations that have come into Holliston over the last several years through the marijuana law have provided us a stream of funding. This is called the Host Community Agreement Funding Base, and we've collected hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's my understanding that money's parked in our general fund in awaiting distribution. The general court, i.e. the legislature, hasn't given small communities in general clarity on exactly what to do with that money. It's a short-term cash flow. Many of these agreements lapse after about five years. So, Holliston believes those funds are ripe for one-time expenses associated with public health and public safety infrastructure improvements. I've encouraged the finance committee to look further to find out if those balances are available to help offset some of the costs that we see here, rather than drawing directly from the capital fund. Again, that's their job, but we see some opportunity there for them to use the funds that we have received over the last several years that we haven't touched.
All right. So, under the Community Preservation Act, we are able to spend money on recreation and so forth. I see that there's some money here, $120,000 to parks. Is this for fields also?
Correct. That's the complimentary piece of the grooming machine I mentioned. I think they're looking to redesign one of the playing fields at Stoddard. It's the softball field. Initially, they came in with a plan that would push the softball field closer to Lake Winthrop and take over this dead space that's an old parking area. They're reconsidering that right now. They do desire to change the small ball field at Stoddard to a larger diamond field to give Adams some relief. The high school ball field, as you probably know, has been mothballed. It's not a playable surface, so they're looking for some solutions. The last time I heard, and I think I read an email from Mark Frank yesterday, was they were rethinking some of the design options because of the space and the distance for playability, but the 120 covers the investment to change the footprint of those playing fields at Stoddard.
And this is not new money. This is money that they already have in the preservation
That's right.
Account, so this is
Yep, that's right.
All right. And speaking of the preservation account, this is a fairly substantive hit for them, but it's the instituting an agricultural preservation restriction on what is called a Thistle Dew Farm. Now, there's something I never knew it had a name.
Yeah.
For the purposes of the public, it's at the Highland Street, at the Ashland end of Highland Street. There's farmland there that is currently being used by lease. It's right across from a bunch of houses
Summit Point.
Yeah, and from Summit Point. So, that gives you the geography of it. The cost for this to the town is $500,000. Having been around when we did the farm down at Highland, you know, I'm a big APR -- that's the acronym for Agricultural Preservation Restriction. I'm a big proponent of this. Let's talk about what we're getting for the $500,000 that we're going to be putting in, and who else is putting in money?
Sure. A group representing the potential buyer, as well as Open Space Committee and others, came before us about a month ago with this proposal. The seller of this property is a longtime Holliston resident who has already moved to place an agricultural preservation restriction on his property. What that means is, he wants the property to be agricultural in perpetuity. It restricts any further development or use of the property, and it's a -- for lack of a better word, it's a piece of currency. And the town has the right to purchase that. An evaluation or an appraisal of the property was done. The 28.74 acres that are in play here were described by folks at the Agricultural State Commission as pristine farmland. It's some of the best they've seen, and at a higher appraisal value. I believe, I don't know if I can, I think it was well over $2 million for the total cost of the property. But the way the package of this agricultural restriction came together includes several partners. The partners include the buyer, and the buyer becomes a direct relationship between the seller, in this case, the current owner, and who he wants to sell to. We don't control that. We have no interest in who will own that portion of the farm. What the town of Holliston is seeking to purchase is the right to restrict that use in perpetuity, and the cost will be half a million dollars. There are other costs associated with the procurement. The buyer is paying in, as well as, I think, a subgroup from the Charles River Association and the Audubon Society. There's some fundraising involved, but the hope is that through the town's action and approval of this article, we will secure this particular piece of property forever as farmable land. If the current farmer, or the buyer, if you will, decides ever to bow out, he has to sell to another farmer with a farm plan. I'm sure you know those, that pass the test of the Agricultural Commission. So, it's part of maintaining farmable land in Holliston and keeping it available for generations to come.
And I could bore you for days about how this program works, having been involved in it, but the thing that I think that the public needs to understand is that there's a market value for the property. What would you be able to sell it for to someone who is going to come in and put in houses?
Right.
And then there's a value, an agricultural value.
They're different.
They're very different. And what we are doing is, we are paying to the current owner of the property, the difference between the market value and the agricultural value, because he is giving up what loosely is termed the development rights. He can never develop it. The future owner can never develop it. It will always be a farm. The remarkable thing about this particular piece of land is that the state was willing to pay $17,000 for an acre, and they usually cap their buys at $10,000. Huge, huge difference.
Right.
And something I never saw in my career with them.
Well, I think it's a reflection of the quality of the land.
It is absolutely a reflection of the quality.
Yeah.
And there is no question that, other than the Connecticut River Valley in western Massachusetts, Massachusetts has very little pristine agricultural land. So, if the day ever comes that we have to really support ourselves, I think it would be great to have a really good piece of agri
28 acres.
Yeah.
It's a big lot.
All right. So, cable access. We need a lawyer for the cable access renewal. I can tell you all about that one, too, right? But it's just an easy one.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is administrative. We have the need to revisit the license currently with Verizon. It's a very technical part of law. Our current counsel cannot tackle this. We desire funds to pay a specialist to help us navigate this new extension of our license with Verizon, so
We've always done this, I can say. It's been typical
It has been done a while, but yes.
But you do it every 10, five years or 10 years, depending on when the license comes up.
Right.
And we've done it before, and we've always had to hire outside legal counsel because you're working with a huge corporation, Verizon in this case, and then in a year, a half, or two years, we'll also be doing it with Comcast.
Right.
So, and they have to be the same. The contracts have to be the same, but we always have to keep in mind that Comcast is up ahead.
Right.
All right. So, water system improvements. Let's
So, if you don't mind, the next three articles are kind of bundled.
Okay.
And that was deliberate. We had talked with the DPW director several months ago about a concept to look holistically at our infrastructure, and that is to say, the amount of money we spend to replace water pipes in our ground is diminished. We spend about $1 million a year through our rates to replace one mile. We have about 60 miles to go.
6-0.
That's right. And at that rate, you know, as they say, by the time you finish, it's time to start again. We've asked him to put forth the possibility of having a study to accelerate that program to perhaps up to three miles per year. There is a tipping point. You don't want our streets, because we're such a small town, tied up to the extent where we're doing more than we should every year. Our Department of Public Works director believes three miles per year is the maximum or optimum area that we should be thinking of replacing. It works into a nice 20-year cycle, and I think when you're thinking of doing that amount of public work over that period of time, you need to be thinking bigger. And our board believes that we need to evaluate a couple of other things that are in play. Number one, the rail trail's been a tremendous success. It's brought people from within and without Holliston to a recreational lifestyle we haven't seen in generations. People are using the trail constantly, if not year-round. The trail cuts through Holliston, as you would imagine, like any rail bed would, to a point where it needs connective pieces. Our community has the possibility over the next 20 years to see all, if not every, street, you know, repaved and reconstructed in a way that we could look at connecting sidewalks as an infrastructure to draw people closer to the center of town. The study will look at a number of different things. It'll look at the plan to look at the acceleration of water pipes, the plan to improve the pedestrian and bicycle experience, in other words, the non-vehicular experience. Make it safer to walk in Holliston. And then finally, the other article, the DPW feasibility study, some folks know, some folks may not know, that for a long time, we had two silos. We had a water department and a public works department, and
Highway department.
Highway. One would open the ground to do their work, and then a week later, that same coal patch would be reopened for another purpose. They weren't, there wasn't cross coordination. That ended. We now have a coordinated Department of Public Works on paper. We still have two different facilities. Both facilities are well, well, well beyond their useful life, to say the least. We desire the feasibility to look at a consolidated public works facility that can bring water and highway under one roof and allow them to make more efficient use of their resources. It's something that I think would happen with existing town-owned land. There wouldn't be any land needs.
Right.
But I think it's long past due. If you expect the town to take care of these new roads we're going to invest in, we should give them the facility and the equipment to do it. So, the plan that people are going to be looking at is three prongs, because they're three different distinctly interesting pieces, but they're coordinated, Mary. And frankly, I envision the same firm to be doing all three of them. The water rate study comes with it. It's time to do a study to see, are we charging the right amount? What are our tiers look like? And is there a possibility of giving rate relief? Speaking just for myself, not for the board, I would love to see the value of the rate that's put upon ratepayers right now relieved. Any costs associated with the new pipes in the ground would be put off to a debt override, so that people pay for it through their tax payments, not through a fee assessed to their water rate. So we'll be looking at that as well when we do the water rate study.
And just to fill in, so, we didn't say this right at the get-go, but the million dollars that we spend for the mile of pipe is the $75 fee that we pay on our water bill.
That's right.
Something that has caused more agita in town over the years than just about anything, except for the trash fee.
Well, it's never fun, it's never fun taking money out of people's pockets, but our water department, our public works department, they do a great job. They're right now finishing up in Mudville. That's the latest project. We're getting actually compliments from people for the work that they're doing in a very condensed area. So it's looking good. They do great work. I just think we should accelerate their work and finish the job so that we have a clean, reliable drinking water system.
Agreed. Agreed. All right. What have you got next?
Advanced metering infrastructure system.
Okay.
So folks know right now that the, the way the water department figures out how much money you're consuming, or how much water you're consuming and what to charge you, there's a wireless hub. Those devices, which are usually located outside your home, are managed by an outside vendor. It is my understanding that this particular article will increase the amount of money we're spending to help people replace the devices sooner. There's a backlog right now, I think, three to six months for people to get that device replaced. In the meantime, you're getting estimated bills, and it creates some unknown havoc with people trying to pay their water bills. So these devices will be replaced quicker with the additional funds made available.
Okay, let's back up in time. Do readers ever go out now, door-to-door?
I don't believe they do.
Yeah, I don't think they do either.
I think it's all electronic.
It's all electronic. So if your meter's not working and you are being overcharged for water, that is, it's recognizing, you know, it's saying you have some use that you haven't had.
Right.
Do you ever get forgiven? Or do you get stuck paying?
I cannot speak to what type of issues have arisen with people having difficulty with poor readings or inaccurate readings. That's the business of the water department. I haven't, I haven't heard of any complaints, so I can't really speak to any real action on that, Mary. Don't worry.
Wow. Actually have heard of stuff or seen stuff on Facebook, but, well, you may hear some of it that night, huh?
I usually do, but not in this case.
Not in this case, okay. All right.
The next item I have is remove structures at 310 Woodland Street.
Yep.
Folks who use the trail, I'm one of them, will notice that behind Holliston Oil, there are some properties there that have long been abandoned. Those properties have been eyesores and safety issues.
Safety issues now especially.
Yeah, it's not very far from the walking public to find their way into this area. We've looked into trying to use existing resources. We just can't. It's going to cost about $20,000 to $25,000 to remove the abandoned buildings and prepare the site and clean the site. It's an area that frankly needs that kind of attention. It's a blight currently, so.
What was in that building?
I have no idea. It's long been abandoned.
Yeah, I have no idea either.
I believe there were two structures, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I know the others, well, anyway, yeah, I don't remember it ever having a useful purpose, but at any rate. Okay. You're going to call yourselves the Select Board, and we just have to approve that.
Correct.
Okay. We've got a donation of a piece of land that's up near...
Mohawk Path.
Mohawk Path. It's just a small piece, right?
That's right.
Yep, okay. And then I have stormwater management, but I think in your new one, you had, do you have something before that?
I do. Yes, I do. Stormwater management.
Okay. All right. Stormwater management. I'm delighted to see that we're finally talking about this, because it's been hanging out there in the environmental world for years and years and years. You guys didn't put this together, right? This was done?
It's a collaboration between the Planning Board and our Public Works Director, Sean Reese.
Okay. And we'll be going through each step of this. I mean, there's, it's a long one.
Well, this article will fund the engineering services for compliance with EPA and MASTEP stormwater regulations. Later on in the warrant, there's an article that seeks to change our bylaws so that we're a little bit more compliant, but we could talk about that when we get to the back.
Okay. All right, let's talk about the facilities manager. This is something that we...
Well, before that, there was an item that crept in subsequent to the version I gave you, and I, right now, it includes $550,000 for the redesign of the Pinecrest Clubhouse. The Select Board had commissioned a working group to look at the clubhouse design. Some folks may know that the clubhouse was built almost 20 years ago. It is completely funded by the Gulf Resources and Revenue. The cost of that bond is about to be paid off. So folks thought that it was the right time to look at the infrastructure and evaluate what improvements need to be made up there. One of the things we asked them to look at was the possibility of taking the tent area and harden it, create a separate function room. The clubhouse committee came before us a couple of times in the last month. Most recently, they gave us a very specific cost model. And without getting into vivid details, because we spent a fair amount of time on a spreadsheet, what they're proposing is a modest modification to the clubhouse. Additional storage, there's virtually none. Improved interior decoration, carpeting, furniture, and so forth, that typically, you know, experiences wear and tear after 20 years of golfers and events. And more importantly, the expansion of the kitchen. The kitchen is a very, very small unit. Some claim that it has some compliance issues with current code. And some may understand that it's currently a contract with an independent company that runs the kitchen and provides food services to the clubhouse. This particular amount of money seems like a lot. It is. Our proposal would be to allow the revenue source, again, from the golfers to pay for this improvement over a period of time. The amount of money that's being requested, if it were to be placed over a 20-year period, it's about $40,000, give or take, based on some estimates of interest. My hope is that, working with the Finance Committee and the Golf Course Advisory Committee, they can explore an opportunity to double or decrease the paydown of that and possibly pay this off in 10 years. Why 10 years? Because in 10 years, the value of this improvement will not have been fully depreciated. In 10 years, we can look at whether or not it's now time to explore the expansion of the facility and the function hall. With a larger kitchen, you could be looking at a larger revenue source. We get about $30,000 a year right now for the cost of operating the kitchen up there. If we were to double the kitchen, some say we could easily double the revenue coming back to the town. That's something that would have to be bargained with the current contracted food provider. So this particular expansion gives us options to explore. It doesn't blow up the golf course budget. They'll still be able to take funds from that annual revenue source and put it back into the course to provide the much-needed improvements that they desire.
Okay, so let's, I just want to make sure that I understand whether any money, if there's going to be any reduction in money to the golf course itself for all of those repairs, and any future repairs and maintenance and support and changes on the golf course as opposed to the clubhouse.
Right. Inevitably, I think there would be. They're collecting between $250,000 and $285,000 for the next three years.
That was a generous one too, as I recall. That contract was a pretty generous.
We nailed it. We did quite well. But the question is, is that a sustainable revenue source for the next 10 or 20 years? You can't count on that. We've seen some years where those dollars crept a little closer to 200 or lower. So we envision some portion of that cash flow would pay for this. We did not want to go all in and use the entire amount, again, for a capital improvement of a clubhouse that doesn't benefit the golf...
Absolutely.
The golf course itself, which does need regular forms of improvement to draw the golfers in. So we think that by drawing between 40 and 80, if they double and go with 10 years, it still leaves adequate resources on the table for them to do their capital improvements each year.
I would certainly hope so, because this has been a debate we've had since we bought the course in the first place, okay? And then when we built the clubhouse, it became a really constant chatter of, is this a golf course and is the food service intended for the golfers? Or is this a restaurant?
It's a very fine line. I will tell you that the Golf Course Advisory Committee did vote on this, and they accepted this proposal.
Yep. So, but I think, I think that the public is going to, you know, there may be some conversation about, as to whether or not we're forgetting the golfers. I guess I'll just toss out an idea. Is anybody talking to the golfers?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
The Golf Clubhouse Committee had extensive discussions with the Golf Course Advisory Committee. In fact, there was at least one member, Larry Wise, who was from the Golf Course Advisory Committee on the clubhouse. So they were sharing information regularly about their preferences.
Yeah, because I really think that the golfers, we cannot, we cannot afford to... They're the golden goose.
They are the golden goose. You're absolutely right.
And from what I understand, we've, we've always been in a little niche market, but we're now becoming singular in being in that market because other courses have closed.
Closed, that's right.
And, you know, Yahoo and Whoopi, and I know a lot of places, the public courses are closing because they don't want to be bothered with them. So, you know, we're a real...
Well, citizens should know that this particular item does not increase their taxes.
Right.
It is, it is not taking money from an existing capital account. It seeks to draw from an existing revenue source that's, you know, already supporting an expiring capital cost to maintain and if not improve that asset. All the while, still giving $60,000 back to the town every year in revenue, general revenue. That's pays for a position somewhere, teacher or something. It's, it's a great, great resource.
It certainly is.
And I know you had a lot to do with it 100 years ago when it took that course.
It was 100 years ago now. It was.
Yeah.
Yeah, now, it was, but it was a, it was an exciting moment in time, I have to tell you. But at any rate, okay. So is the, now are we to the facilities manager?
We are, we've arrived.
Okay. This is, this is one I think I expect to see some conversation about.
I hope so. This would probably be, if I, if I could speak for my fellow Select Board members, our top priority. This position was floated in the spring. It was withdrawn at the last minute for funding reasons and because there was some ambiguity over some rules. So I took over some ownership of this position this summer and decided to commit some good old-fashioned shoe leather to the process. It was important that this position reach out to the stakeholders and the people that it will be working with every day. Obviously, we have a town administrator who gets calls virtually every day on any number of different facility issues. He's not paid to respond to those things. He has no skill to do that. But he's one of many people across the town that find themselves without a resource, whether you're in the Parks Department, the library, the senior center, 1750 Washington Street, which is another building. There are any number of areas where we just don't have a consolidated understanding of what our building assets require. And this, this goes across a lot of different areas, including deferred maintenance of the buildings, whether or not it's worth putting money towards an improvement, the security of the building, on and on. We met early on, I think it was in July, Sean Reese, Jeff Ritter, myself, and Ben Sparrow volunteered his time from the Finance Committee. We took it seriously to understand the breadth of this position. We looked at other towns' current contemporary postings for the position, so we could understand what would we be looking to compete with. And then we began meeting with the stakeholders. Our group met first with Parks and Rec. They embraced this opportunity. I believe their board actually voted for it. They understand that they're in the business primarily of delivering a quality recreational product to citizens in Holliston. And one of the things that they do not want to be in the business of is taking care of buildings and property.
Yep.
An area that we can kind of foresee, you know, down the road, that this position may morph into a department of public buildings or public facilities. And if it does, we can then talk with the parks about moving the maintenance of fields, which of course, we've talked earlier about as a major issue, under this role. It's foreseen. We put that forth as a three-year plan that can be considered down the road. The first thing that this person has to do on day one is to give out his or her phone number. People will need to know, how am I going to reach you when my pipe leaks or when the electricity is malfunctioning?
Or when the roof collapses.
The roof is falling down. Right. Sorry to say. So that's an important part of what we're trying to project here, is the need that this position is going to fill a humongous void in our management of assets. We presented to the school department finally in late August. The schools have resources, right? They have a number, I think it's four or five different workers who perform, you know, daily tasks slightly above maintenance. They have an electrician and people who handle those things, but they don't have somebody of an engineering background to give a conceptual idea of what to do without an air handler and so forth. And they have by far the most square footage. I think they're over 300,000 square feet in total square footage. So what we talked to them about was bringing this position up. You know, we want it to succeed in year one. That would be the year that they are, this individual's assessing their surroundings. What's the portfolio look like? Where are the areas that we need immediate action on? Year two, they're starting to implement those changes. Maybe they're getting money from, you know, town meeting this time next year, hopefully, to make those improvements. Year three, they're expanding, and they're talking to the Parks and Rec, they're talking to the school department and probably the Finance Committee about ways to grow the program so that a professional group of facility individuals can manage our assets the way they, they're deserved. This will save the town money in the long term. We will not be spending money to replace things that broke. We will be spending money to, shorter money to repair them and keep them in good working order.
There's also another piece, I think, and I, for me anyway, in terms of the need for this, and that is when we do have a project going on, the roof at the library, and only because I think that Leslie McDonald is probably the nicest person in the world, okay? And you walk in and she shows me where the roof is, you know, straining and what's going to happen and so forth. And then you go ahead and you hire contractors, and now it's, you know, somehow she is the one that's the point person within the building. And she has to call the building inspectors appropriate, or she has to talk to the builders, and she has to answer questions. Leslie is the best, best librarian and nicest person, but she isn't in the business of following up on contracts with, with, you know...
Hey, Mary, just to use that example, make it worse for a moment. That particular problem, and folks don't understand, it involved a roof failure that was years in the making.
Yeah.
And it presented itself last spring, and luckily nobody was injured, but the trust system was actually falling apart.
Yep.
That could have been a lot worse if it wasn't covered by insurance. We used the insurance company's resources to hire somebody to manage the project.
Yep.
In the event that that was not covered by insurance, there's nobody, I mean, Leslie's one, who does that?
Right.
And we probably would have had to pay out of pocket to, to pay for somebody to professionally manage the project.
All the times that the, not the septic, the plumbing in the lower, lower level broke, she's the one that's working with it. You know, and it's like, come on, peoples. So as far as I'm concerned, I think this is not just due, but long overdue.
I would agree.
Okay. Dam inspections, are we really going to do dam inspections? We're finally going to have a plan to do?
We actually, this is an interesting story. One of the first things I tackled on the board was a report that showed that, I believe we have four dams in town that were declared to be in poor or worse condition. The dams are quite old. They have served various purposes over the years, including two which I believe were made to create ice for folks in town in years gone by. Subsequently, we had the dams inspected. There is funding available for the Town of Holliston to address the remediation of the dam. By that, I mean one of two things, either repair or release. We've engaged a company to evaluate what this infrastructure looks like. We need to fund a little bit more money to find out some critical answers. Who owns the dams? The Weston Pond Dam is one of the newer ones, and I think it's not quite 100 years old, but that may very well be a state property. We have to do some title search. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm told that kind of work is, is involved, and it takes many hours of a...
The ancestry of Lake Weston Pond, huh?
There'll, there'll be some needs to explore the ownership and then the condition of the dams to find out, are they worth repairing or can we release? If we release, what's the impact? Is it a controlled release? The individual consultants that came in to talk to us said, you know, it's not just about releasing the water. The material that's left behind the dam, in most cases, could be considered hazardous. And now you're into a whole different world, DEP regulations, removing it, remediating it, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
So we want to understand, what are we in front of here before we make the call to the state to fund whatever action is deemed necessary? But it's a deliberate step. It's slow. This has been going on for a year. Might go on for another year. But with the state's help, we think that we'll be within reach of dealing with this infrastructure issue, hopefully long before Mother Nature does something to us that we can't turn the clock back on.
Yeah, the one that's down at the Eight Arch Bridge, which I got to know intimately when I was working down there and walking around down there all the time and stuff, is beyond, beyond.
Yeah. It doesn't owe us anything, is it?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. And that one's well over 100 years old, I'm sure.
Right.
All right, and let's see, that's that. And solid waste and recycling.
Right, so this item is still kind of very fluid. We're proposing a $200,000 item to uphold a potential cost associated with expanding the trash and recycling program that we have. I might be responsible for this.
Meaning you caused it to happen?
I think I may have.
You may have caused it.
But I feel strongly that if people pay taxes, they should enjoy the benefit of the services. There are many condos in town and small businesses. When this particular contract went out, it was identified to be basically replacing the residential services that had been previously in place. However, the contract itself, you know, doesn't prohibit us from expanding it for areas including condominiums and public ways as well as small businesses. I heard from several small businesses in town who were absolutely flummoxed when this change came out. They had no idea where their trash was going to go. We've heard passionately from people over the last several months about the problems this has created for them. So we've asked our town administrator to explore two factors. What would be the cost of expanding the program to public access condominiums only? So those who are on a private, unaccepted road, sorry, you can't opt in.
Right.
But if you are a private, excuse me, a public road condominium and your association doesn't have resources or contracts that otherwise pay a cheaper fee or a fee that's acceptable, we've asked the condominiums to get back to us and tell us, do you want to opt in? And those letters went out about a week ago to the various condo associations. We're waiting to hear back from them. With respect to the business district, this is a little slippier because we don't really have a way of identifying who would be the candidate to opt into this program. We've talked about a couple of different models. We've had council tell us that we could define a business district under state law that we could use to identify who would be eligible. That piece is not known yet. So as I said, this article is fluid. We've got a few weeks to figure it out. We're expecting to hear back from the condos. Our town administrator is working on this, so we'll see what he's got to say in the next couple of weeks, and we'll see if it's ready for primetime on August, excuse me, October 28th.
Yeah, the condo issue is a dicey one.
Well, fair is fair. I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Well, I don't know. I think you and I may even have discussed this when we were on the Board of Assessors together, that, you know, when somebody buys a condo, they often expect that they're going to be paying for their trash. It's often part of the conversation.
They would, unless, under certain circumstances, their trash services were previously covered by the town.
Yeah, no, we have a couple of unique situations, or at least one unique situation where it was.
In fact, we found a loophole in the current contract to address some of the smaller condo units. If they were units of four, up to four, we could bring them into the system under the contract, and we did.
Yeah.
We did that in July or August, I think. So we did capture some of the smaller ones, yeah, but the larger ones at Burnout, Crestview and so forth.
Yep.
We have to carefully assess what would that impact be.
Yep.
And we're measuring that right now.
All righty. Then is the last one the bylaw?
Second to last.
Second to last. What have you got for, oh, no, last, that's right. We had some little petition?
We have a petition article, yeah.
Okay.
So the illicit discharge bylaw, this harkens back to that earlier article, we're going to hire an engineering firm to look at our discharge.
This is stormwater management.
Stormwater management, that's right. I know precious little about the content, only to say that it's a collaboration between our Planning Board and our Public Works Director to examine the town's use of primarily sump pumps and the impact that those discharges have on the stormwater management system within our town. There are some impacts on aquatic wildlife habitats, ponds, streams. If people are pumping things out of their basement, that's contaminated water. If it's going into a sewer drain or a catch basin, we need to understand where that water's going. So this particular bylaw.
And what's in that water?
Yeah. This bylaw seeks to control that. It will seek to have some regulation over sump pumps and sump pumps in town. We're still working out some bugs on this language. I think there's still some question about when we would receive those sump pumps into our inventory of regulatory devices. There's some question about whether or not we need to put that out a little further to possibly 2021 or beyond for compliance, but.
But it covers everything. I mean, it covers pesticides and fertilizers and stuff. It covers agriculture.
Again, water is the number one issue.
Yeah.
As a select person, you know, you look at what I'm elected to do and the things that keep me awake at night, water's in the top three.
Yep.
If we don't deliver a quality water product, we're not doing our job right. So water comes from aquifers, whackafur is the wells, the wells cover the houses, so we'd better be doing it right. So that's pretty much what this article is seeking to do. The last item is a citizens petition article. For folks at home to know, there's an article at the back end currently, I don't know where it'll be positioned ultimately, but a petition came through to limit the first school pickup as no earlier than sunrise for elementary students. The petitioners followed the procedure. They got the registered signatures, and they had the petition certified by the town clerk. Automatically, it goes into the warrant.
Right.
The selectmen have nothing to do with this. We don't control whether it gets in or not. There is some dialogue. We heard from one of the school committee members last night asking us to declare this an improper article. It might be. This is an article that will receive some attention by the moderator at the commencement or during our town meeting on October 28th. I suspect that one of the things that'll be in play is whether or not a petition article, should it pass, can it compel an elected independent authority, in this case, the school committee, to do something? The Select Board's had a couple of those incidences over the last couple of years, one involving condos and the collection of trash there. The Board of Selectmen at the time elected not to adopt what the town elected, excuse me.
Town meeting elected.
The town meeting voted to do, but more recently in the spring, the town had a petition article to create a sustainability coordinator, something we are embracing and we are working on. So I can't predict what will happen at town meeting. I would hope and think that the process will be, you know, civil and productive, for people to understand the pros and cons of what they're trying to put forward. But ultimately, it really depends on the town moderator's interest in the article, where it fits, and then ultimately how it plays with respect to the school's authority.
Just to clarify on that, there is a forum about the subject. This is about the start times of school, and this is primarily Miller School creates some difficulties for parents and.
The school kids.
Whatever. You know, it's the ages of the kids and how early they have to be out for their buses and that kind of thing. So there's a lot of conversation and chatter, but there is a public forum to be held October